County School District 0001 and the Board of Educational Service Unit Number 19 will be held on Wednesday, January 20th, 2016 at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 84-1412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are going to read together our, the OPS Vision and Mission Statement. The vision, every student, every day, prepare for success. And the mission, Omaha Public Schools prepares our students to excel in college, career, and life.
Roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Fay.
Here.
Gadding.
Here.
America.
Present.
Scanlon.
Snow.
Here.
Underwood.
Here.
Vargas.
Here.
Wayne.
Williams.
Present.
Seven present.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to excuse Mr. Wayne who had a work commitment this evening, and then I have not heard from Mr. Scanlon, so I assume he's on his way. I move to excuse Mr. Wayne tonight. Is there a second?
Second.
So, motion by Mrs. Fay and a second by Mr. Vargas to excuse Mr. Wayne. Roll call, please.
Gadding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Seven aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I would just like to remind everyone in the audience to please silence your cell phones, reminding the Board of Education of the same thing, so that we have no disruptions. At this time, I would like to welcome Monique Farmer, who's our new Director of Communications, to the podium to introduce our school spotlight.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I will be introducing the school spotlight for this evening. Congratulations to Wilson Focus School and Principal Brett Anderson. The school was selected as an Apple Distinguished School for 2005 through 2017. The award recognizes the school for being an exemplary learning environment for innovation, leadership, and educational excellence. Representatives from Wilson Focus School are here with us this evening. Please join me in welcoming them.
Board, I'm just glad everybody came out to see the success of one of our positive schools. This is great. Everybody came tonight for the Focus School.
President Gadding, members of the Board, Superintendent Evans. My name is Paul Pittman. I'm the Area Marketing Manager for Apple for the western half of the United States. It is truly a pleasure to be here. Along with me from Apple is Mark Billington, our local Apple executive here for the state of Nebraska. And on behalf of Apple, I am honored to recognize Wilson Focus School as an Apple Distinguished School, and I'd like to read your recognition letter sent to you by our Vice President of Education, Mr. John Couch, who's our Vice President of Worldwide Education. It's actually addressed to Superintendent Evans. It says, Dear Mr. Evans, it is a pleasure to inform you that Wilson Focus School has been selected as an Apple Distinguished School for 2015 to 2017, a two-year designation. Congratulations on being recognized as an exemplary learning environment for innovation, leadership, and education excellence. The administration and faculty at Wilson Focus School has shown that they demonstrate the five best practices of an Apple Distinguished School, which is visionary leadership, innovative learning and teaching, ongoing professional learning, compelling evidence of success, and a flexible learning environment. Apple has engaged with educators for well over 30 years to explore and enhance the experience of teaching and learning. Our education mission is to provide a learning environment that supports the way students live and how they want to learn. We applaud schools such as this one that advance this mission, ensuring that all students are prepared for future success in work and in life. A special thanks goes to Principal Brett Anderson for his leadership and inspiration for his staff and students at Wilson. Apple Distinguished Schools and Apple Distinguished Programs are centers of innovation, leadership, and education excellence that demonstrate our vision. They use Apple hardware apps and content to promote creativity, collaboration, innovation, and critical thinking to transform teaching and learning. Principal Anderson and his staff exemplify all these traits. We are proud to recognize you.
Congratulations, and thank you so much. It's a great, great honor, so thank you very much for being here to present that. At this time, I would like to ask Letitia Fitch, Letitia Fitch, to come to the podium. There she is. She is our interpreter for this evening, and she will share a little bit of information.
Para todas las familias hispanas que están allí, si necesitan traducción, tenemos unos sistemas de audífonos. Si lo necesitan, voy a estar atrás del Board, y pueden pasar por ellos si necesitan asistencia. Gracias.
Thank you so much. All right. Silence those phones. Okay. With that, we are going to move on to the Board and Superintendent Communications, and I will call on Mrs. Kenoke for the treasurer's report.
The treasurer's report is submitted for your review. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So if anyone has any questions, if you'd please forward those to Mrs. Kenoke. Mr. Evans, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Just one other note, I want to again thank Monique Farmer for joining us. Monique is our new District Communications Director, and Monique was most recently at Conagra, and prior to that had a long career with the Army Corps of Engineers and multiple degrees in communication and marketing, so thank you for joining us, and we're happy to have you here tonight. I also wanted to take a moment just to say thank you and congratulations for the great representation from one of our board members that was recognized as 40 under 40, Mr. Mark Snow to my left. Congratulations, Mr. Snow, for that great representation. And also just wanted to share with the whole Board that we continue to meet with senators and do school visits. We've visited Wakanda and Liberty in the last few weeks and continue to have opportunities to expose our senators from Lincoln to all of our schools and the great work that's going on with our great staff, our great teachers, our great principals. Of course, we saw a little bit of that tonight with the Wilson Focus School. So those are just a few of the updates as we head into our new year, and thank you, Madam President.
At this time, are there board member reports? If they're already... Mr. Scanlon.
I just wanted to say that I got the chance to go out to another Gold Award luncheon, Ponca Elementary. They're doing great work up there, and also got to look at the, the construction underway up there, and they're definitely dealing with it in a good way. They've got a lot going on, but congratulations to them as achieving that, and they're setting their sights on, I think it's, this would be their third or fourth year in a row, so looking forward to seeing if they can make it.
Anyone else? Mr. Vargas.
Thank you, President Gadding. Just a couple. So wanted to congratulate our South High Lovables, represented us in, I know I'm seeing a little... People can't see the, this movement back there. South High Lovables represented OPS, South High, in one of the bowl games in New Orleans, and that was not an easy feat, not only just to raise the money, but also to just build public support, and so I wanted to make sure to acknowledge them. And simultaneously, I also wanted to acknowledge South High Packers Basketball Team for winning the Metro Tournament. It's a very, very big deal, so go Pack. And also wanted to, also had an opportunity along with Mr. Evans to sit with the, we talked a little bit about the Human Growth and Development Curriculum with some South, South Omaha and Latino bilingual liaisons and other community leaders to begin... What we're actually, ooh, thank you. What we're actually communicating through the standards, what the standards are and they aren't, what curriculum is and isn't, and getting some feedback.
Ms. America, as soon as, are we on back on?
It sounds like we're working. Those I can't talk about tonight either. I also wanted to second the shout-out to the South High Lovables. They not only performed at the Sherwood Bowl, they were awarded the Spirit Award. TV, but I've heard they're going to be performing at Friday night at the basketball game, so definitely go check that out. And also wanted to give our community a reminder that I think most of our high schools are having their eighth grade open houses this week, so if you have an eighth grader, visit the high schools. Even if you don't have an eighth grader, take some time to visit the high school area, see what's going on, and learn about the different programs that are available at all of our high schools.
Thank you. Yes, I have an eighth grader, and our whole calendar is booked for this week, so we're pretty excited. I just wanted to mention that I was also with Mr. Evans at Wakanda, and I would just encourage our board members who haven't had a chance to go out there yet to see what's happening, to get the opportunity, if you get the opportunity, to take a few minutes and go take a look. I was extremely impressed. They had the opportunity, some of the leadership, to visit a school in Chicago, brought back a number of really incredible innovative ideas and concepts for instruction, and I was completely blown away, so I would encourage you to do that. Also had the opportunity, right before the holidays, to go to Lothrup, where our county treasurer, John Ewing, worked with a number of community organizations to provide coats for every single student in the school. So got to be there for the coat handout, which was a whole lot of fun. So I just want to thank everyone who was a part of that and who donated their time, their money, and their talent for our students at Lothrup. Oh, Mr. Vargas has one more item, and then we're done.
Yes, so I wanted to, the privilege of attending, and it was actually in this room, Thrive. If you do not know what Thrive is, Thrive is our, our Leadership Development, is an after-school program, working with our migrant and refugee students, and it's an incredible program that works, it's been growing for the last three or four years across all of our high schools, not all of our high schools yet, majority of our high schools. And in this room, there was, there was an end-of-year celebration, but also goodbye to one of the founding staff members, and it was tremendous to see the level of commitment to the program, but also just the love and support that people were giving one another in this room. And so this is a shout-out to our migrant refugee program for supporting endeavors like this, to our staff and leadership that have programs like this, that make sure we're creating a very inclusive environment in OPS that honors the individual identities of each and every student within our district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Is that one working? Okay. We have approximately 45 speakers who have submitted... All right, we'll try this one. The Board has adopted, did I go back off, or am I on? Okay. The Board has adopted Policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to five minutes, a maximum. We ask that you respect that time limit. Mr. Ray, who is sitting right over here at the end of the table, will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining, and I will not give that instruction again. Given the number of speakers, we ask that to the extent you are able, you keep your comments brief, so that we can hear from as many as possible in the allotted time. If you're in need of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know, we've already heard from Ms. Fitch. We understand that people have strong feelings about the issues they come to speak about. We ask that you respect the opinions of all who speak, and that you refrain from applause or other outbursts during the presentations. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or to a staff member, we ask that you not mention the student or the staff member by name, and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will assist us in looking into those types of specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Mr. Ray. He will make sure that each member of the Board of Education gets a copy. As a reminder, and I will just say this one time, as a reminder, when you come forward, we ask that you please state your name, spell your name, and state your address before you begin your public comment. It is now 6:50 PM, and our first public speaker is Cheri Durie.
Good evening. Cheri Durie, C-H-E-R-I-D-U-R-Y-E-A. My address is 18375 Atlas Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68130, and I'm a member of the Women's Fund Board of Directors. As a trusted expert in the community, the Women's Fund identifies critical issues, funds innovative solutions, and influences dynamic change. For 25 years, the Women's Fund has supported local agencies with more than $4.5 million in grants for programs that address the most pressing issues as identified by our research, and then establish our own programs to meet unaddressed needs. One of these programs is the Adolescent Health Project. Our research highlighted that our youth, and therefore our community, are suffering, and that there is a great need to increase sexual literacy for their health and well-being. Youth interviews revealed that the sexual knowledge levels of youth in Douglas County are low, with about half having a rudimentary base. Youth listed schools as one of their main sources of information, but recognized the restrictions their teachers are operating under, feeling that the information was inadequate. We wholeheartedly believe that parents should be having these discussions with their children too, but we also know that in most homes, this doesn't happen, or when it does, many times it is incomplete and not helpful. It's important that kids have access to factual information. An environmental scan showed significant racial disparities in both STD and teen pregnancy rates. This means there is a large lack of access to effective sex education and healthcare. This project seeks to create sustainable, community-wide changes through a research-based, results-focused, comprehensive approach that will, one, increase the sexual knowledge and health of youth, and therefore, two, decrease the number of youth engaging in risky sexual behavior and the rates of STDs and teen pregnancy. We cannot continue to bury our heads in the sand and think that kids are not having sex. Statistics show otherwise. Our vision is a community where every woman and girl has the opportunity to reach her full potential. Comprehensive sex education seeks to empower young people, especially girls and other marginalized young people, to see themselves and others as equal members in their relationships, able to protect their own health, and as individuals capable of engaging as active participants in society. Comprehensive sex education allows for meaningful conversations about gender equity, consent, and healthy relationships, and combats harmful gender role stereotypes. It provides vital information and access to birth control, which allows for economic viability as these kids plan for their future, as well as the positive economic impact it has on the community as a whole. Sex education positively impacts all genders and equips diverse families with the information and skills to plan their future. When it comes to research on quality sex education, there is no division on what is effective. Rigorous review of studies show that giving youth the information, skills, and support to make informed decisions through comprehensive sex education improves their academic success and their overall health. Our kids need and deserve accurate, complete information. Comprehensive sex education works and includes age-appropriate, medically accurate information on a broad set of topics related to sexuality, including human development, relationships, decision-making, abstinence, contraception, and disease prevention. Comprehensive sex education programs can help youth delay onset of sexual activity, reduce the frequency of sexual, I'm sorry, sexual activity, reduce the number of sexual partners, and increase condom and contraceptive use. Embarrassingly, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, in a report released in December of 2015, released new data showing that fewer than half of high schools and only a fifth of middle schools teach all 16 sex education topics, well renunciated by the agency. This is a dangerous level of ignorance perpetuate. Without access to effective sex education, youth make decisions about their health based on inaccurate, incomplete information, denying young people life-saving information as long-term consequences. Parents are also susceptible to misinformation as myths on sex education are pervasive... Conversations about parents, about sexuality. Dr. Tibbetts' interviews with youth in Douglas County found that most parents don't talk to their kids about sex, even if those youths want them to. It is our duty to separate fact from fiction. Communities have the responsibility to provide young people with honest, age-appropriate sexuality education in order to help them safeguard their health and well-being. We must stand on the shoulders of science, making decisions based on fear and insulation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is CJ Mays. We're having a little bit of trouble with the audio, so just kind of pause, and hopefully it'll come back on. We're needing to work on the board back there, so...
Thank you. My name is CJ Mays, C-J-M-A-Y-S, and I'm a student in public schools.
And your address?
Oh, sorry. 3118 South 158th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68130. So parents send their children to school so that they can be educated. That is without a doubt, you can't argue that, no matter what. So, many children go off of what social media's power like projecting, and unfortunately, many TV shows, they almost glorify this inappropriate behavior, you know, drug abuse, sexual activities, dangerous behaviors, that's almost encouraged, and it's very unfortunate that students aren't taught otherwise in certain areas. Yes, we have a sex ed class in my school, but when I went through it last year, it was very disappointing, because it's like, I don't have statistics memorized in my head. I don't have some facts that I can just whip out and throw in your face. I can't do any of that. But seeing through that class, there are many errors in sex ed curriculum that I could easily point out. One being that with rape and all that, we were never taught, the teachers were never warned about triggers and all that. So they had students out there who were pretending rape scenes and all that, to almost like give you an idea of what it's like. They had students who were up there just pretending to rape each other, just so they knew what it was like, as a little kid in the back who's freaking out, having panic attacks, he's being triggered, but teachers were never taught that. It's very unfortunate, because I mean, that's just one change that we need to see there. And one change that I want to see as a student in the schools is, jeez, I'm losing myself here. here. It's just that students need more resources to go off of. In my school, we are just taught, absence is the true way to go, and if you're not absent, you're pretty much going to get 50 shades of chlamydia, which we all know isn't 100% guaranteed. We are not taught that, hey, you know, we can't stop you from all these sexual behaviors, or your parents are going to be watching you over your shoulder constantly, every single day of your life. You're going to go out to parties, you're going to do what you're going to do, and you know, one day, maybe you lose your virginity. But we're not taught how to respect yourself. We're not taught how to respect your partner. We're not taught how to put on a condom for whatever reason. Many students don't even know that, at the NAP building, they have a giant fishbowl of condoms, that you can walk in, take a handful of them for free, and walk out, darned to say a single word. It's resources like that that we are not taught, that we are not provided with. And so, when stuff happens, like unplanned pregnancies or getting STD, where are we supposed to go? A lot of parents argue that they should be the ones teaching their children, and that I fully agree with. Parents should have a very strong influence in their children's lives. But what happens when your parents are very biased, or they don't have accurate resources, because they haven't gone to school in 20-plus years? So, maybe statistics come out, new studies come out, new diseases come out, that parents aren't aware of. Schools are the ones that are constantly updated, that are constantly informed about what's going on with new diseases, with new ways to prevent those diseases. So, I believe that schools should teach those stuff, like, if you're not going to be abstinent, here's some alternatives that you can go to, such as Planned Parenthood, or you go to the NAP building, get STD tested, or get abortions at other places. You can have all these resources that you can just have at your fingertips. We are not taught that in my school, and we are not taught that at many other schools as well. And that's very unfortunate, and maybe that's why we have such high STD rates, why we have such high unplanned pregnancy rates, is because we're not taught, it's what is taught, hey, absence is the best way, you're in or you're out.
One minute.
These are just changes that, as a 16-year-old junior, I would love to see in my school. And thank you so much for letting me speak today.
Can you just share with us, are you in an OPS school?
I am actually currently enrolled in the Miller, but another OPS is...
Okay, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Gwen Gaston. Our next speaker is Renee Fry.
Hi there. My name is Renee Fry, R-E-N-E-E-F-R-Y, and I live at 13020 Benny Street. I am on the Women's Fund Board, but I'm not here speaking on their behalf. I'm here today as a parent of a fourth-grade student at Picotte Elementary in District Number Five. My day-to-day work is grounded in the reality that data and facts help people make better, more informed decisions. I believe that this is equally, if not more, important for our kids. When it comes to human growth and development, my daughter is already bringing erroneous information home from friends. Of any subject she learns in school, not having current information in this area could be the most detrimental to her future. Being a child today is very different than when these standards were last changed, and as an OPS parent, I would ask you to update the standards in accordance with best practices, so that our children are making informed decisions. And these girls, this is my daughter Samantha and her friend Hadley, they have prepared some comments that they would like to share today.
Hi, my name is Sam.
And my name is Hadley. We go to an OPS school. We think that OPS should update their curriculum on sexual education, because our friends are non-factual of what they say about this topic.
We need help to learn this curriculum at this age.
This will be way too embarrassing for us to ask our parents when we're older, so please, mothers and fathers, give us the chance to have us learn this, so when we get older, we'll understand what's happening to us.
Please. We know you might not want to teach your children that, but they need to learn eventually. Thank you.
Thanks so much for your time. Thank you. Our next speaker is Ben Gray.
Madam President, members of the School Board, my name is Ben Gray. I live at 4942 Nebraska Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68104. I have to do a disclaimer very quickly, because I'm not here as the president of the Omaha City Council, nor am I here representing District Two. I'm here as the proud parent of six children, who are all OPS graduates and doing very well, and seven grandchildren, who are doing amazingly well in the Omaha Public Schools as well. I'm here in support of the new content standards for human growth and development, without any changes. Ladies and gentlemen, let me say to you all that information is power. Information helps you make the best decisions possible. You all know that. You all engage in it almost every day. We also, on the City Council, engage in good decision-making every day, based on the appropriate information. Information is power. When you don't have information, it renders you powerless. But more importantly, it makes you susceptible to individuals and others who would just want to give you disinformation, or more importantly, take advantage of you. So, it is important to have the appropriate information. For decades, this school district and others across the country have taken on the responsibility of sexually appropriate education. We should not stop now. We should not change now, other than to upgrade our standards, so that our children get the best information possible. All you have to do is look at the skyrocketing STD rates, the unbelievable pregnancy rates in this particular county, which in most instances is either two or three times the national average, to know that information is not getting out there. It is unbelievable to me sometimes that people want to deny other people the right to have If you don't like, if you don't want your children to be exposed to the sex education that is being proposed here today, you can opt out. I mean, you don't have to do this. But to say, but to speak for other children that are not yours, for other families that are not yours, is not fair, and it's inappropriate. Education ought to give our children all of the tools necessary for them to succeed in life. And this kind of information that we're talking about today is information that could change the course of children's lives forever, forever. And so, we need to be strategic, we need to be honest, but we also need to provide the appropriate information for young people to make intelligent decisions. Will they always do it? No. We all know that. But the fact of the matter is, is that if they have the information, over the course of time, they are going to make better decisions, but more importantly, they're going to impart those decisions to their offspring. So, it is important for you all to take into consideration the fact that your sex education program needs to be updated. You need to be, you need to look at this and say, you know, we have to, we, as a school district, have to make sure that our children have the most important information and the most appropriate information when they leave the classroom every day. I am in support of continuing the new content standards, without any deviation, without any changes, and I thank you for your time and your attention for me today. Thank you all.
Thank you. The next speaker is Thomas Warren, Senior.
Good evening, President Gadding, Mr. Evans, members of the School Board and staff. My name is Thomas Warren, W-A-R-R-E-N, address 3040 Lake Street. I currently serve as President and Chief Executive Officer at the Urban League of Nebraska. We administer programs in education and youth development. We work very closely with the Omaha Public Schools District, and I am here in support of the comprehensive human growth and development curriculum, and I ask that you adopt the curriculum as originally proposed, those revisions. The Urban League of Nebraska has served this community for 88 years. We serve students, youth, and young adults in North Omaha, unfortunately, many of them who are engaging in risky behavior. You've heard the statistics. I see those young mothers, many of them single, with their infant children, and unfortunately, according to the data... ...as teen parents. It would be nice if all parents could educate their children on human growth and development and provide that sexual education, but it's not realistic. I could tell you, this past summer, we participated in the Adolescent Health Project. We administered interviews and surveys to many of our students, our program participants, with their parents' consent, and it was very insightful, but what it revealed is that our youth are under-informed when it comes to these matters. And more importantly, overwhelmingly, they were in favor of more education and more of a comprehensive sex ed curriculum. In order to break this multi-generational cycle of poverty that we experience, we have to inform our youth, and I feel that it is the school district's role and responsibility to make sure that our students have all the information available. They need to be informed about the potential risk of certain behavior. They need to be informed about the potential consequences of engagement in certain activities. We know that they'll be better off and will have a greater opportunity to reach their full potential if they don't engage in this behavior. So, I feel that a comprehensive sex ed program will provide our students with information that is necessary in order for them to learn how to take care of their bodies, so that they can grow into healthy young adults. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Hallie Hamilton.
Thank you. My name is Hallie Hamilton, spelled H-A-L-L-I-E, and I am a representative of Nebraska Family Alliance.
Can you please share your address?
Yes, I forgot that part. It's 1900 Prospect Street, Apartment Three, in Lincoln, Nebraska. NFA opposes portions of the updated curriculum standards for human growth and development. I would like to point out that there are some really good additions to the curriculum. I think, remembering off the top of my head, there are increased focus on health and wellness for students. We think that's great. There's also a new section on human trafficking, and we've worked hard to combat trafficking, and we know that the Task Force for Human Trafficking, with the Governor's Task Force, excuse me, has just released a study that has shown that 50 to 100 girls are trafficked out of our high schools every single year. And that's an incredible number, and that's the low end. They say at least 50 to 100. So, I just want to thank you guys for the thought that you've put into these curriculum standards and your approach to broadening some of these things that we talk about. Many people are here today to discuss the merits of different types of sex education curriculum, but what I'd like to address is actually the opt-out provision. I attended the community forum held in October and had a very interesting conversation. I sat down next to a gal who I wasn't, who I didn't know, and after talking for a little while, it became clear that I worked for NFA, and so we opposed the curriculum, and she supported it, and we had a great conversation about it. And at one point, as things were becoming more emotional, there were some people who were becoming very upset, and there was some yelling that was happening, and she said, "Why are people so angry? Why don't they just opt out? They can opt their kids out, why are they so mad?" And it started kind of an interesting dialogue that we had about why people were emotional and whether that was legitimate or not. But I thought about it later, and it's true that the new standards have caused an outcry among concerned parents in the community, and supporters of the changes often point to opt out as an easy solution. But using opt-out as a compromise for implementing new standards against the desires of so many will divide the district by creating conflict between Omaha Public Schools and the people it serves, parents and children. Opt-out policies can put parents and school leaders at odds. They force parents into the difficult position of removing their child from a classroom, and schools in the difficult position of endorsing material that parents oppose. Opt-out should be utilized only as a last resort, when no other reasonable solution can be agreed upon. And according to the recent Omaha Public Schools survey, approximately 65% of parents said they were comfortable with some of the controversial topics that OPS is considering adding to human growth and development curriculum. But that means that more than a third of all the parents surveyed would be put in the position of potentially opting their children out of at least part of the class. Contrast this with the fact that, according to the same survey, 95% of parents said they were satisfied with the status quo in human growth and development. Now, we all want our children to avoid high-risk behaviors that put not only their physical health at risk, but their mental and emotional health as well. This is not controversial. But issues such as abortion, emergency contraception, or abortifacians, masturbation, homosexuality, gender identity, gender fluidity, and transgenderism are controversial. On these controversial topics, there isn't consensus on what is medically accurate, nor is there consensus on what is age-appropriate. Agreement on these issues is critical to the success and support of any sex education curriculum. When parents and schools are at odds, the authority of both are compromised. It is unnecessary for OPS to put itself at odds, with up to 30 to 40% of parents in the district. No school should impose a policy against the will of so many parents. It's in the best interest of everyone, especially our children and grandchildren, that parents and school leaders in the Omaha Public Schools work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Riley Welsh. Please refrain from clapping, so that we can get through. Riley Welsh.
Hi. My name is Riley Welsh, spelled R-Y-L-E-I-G-H-W-E-L-S-H. My address is 5005 Spencer Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68104. I am a sophomore at Central High School. I have been in the OPS system since I was in graded school. Comprehensive sexual education is important for every single one of my peers. It is important to have all the information in order to make an educated decision regarding my body and how to take care of it. I have a right to this information. Every person, regardless of race, religion, sexual orientation, and gender identity, have a right to accurate sexual education. In all of my classes at school, we are given accurate information, all of the information, so when our homework has a super-hard problem on it, we are able to take all the information to determine the best answer. It is the same with sexual health. Information is important for making a decision. Innocence is not the same as ignorance. Ignorant decisions are due to a lack of information. If you're only... We deserve this. Sexual health is more than just sex. It's about respect and healthy relationships. It's about understanding and taking care of your body, and being prepared for a healthy future for you and your relationships. Sexual health needs to be about the big picture. To end, a quote by Eli Coleman, "Sexual health is more than freedom from sexual disease or disorders. Sexual health is non-exploitive and respectful of self and others. Sexual health is dependent upon an individual's well-being and sense of self-esteem. Sexual health requires trust, honesty, and communication." Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chris... Our next speaker is Chris Rogers.
Madam Chair, Madam President, members of the Board, Chris Rogers, C-H-R-I-S-R-O-D-G-E-S. The address is 1819 Farm Street. I am talking to you as the President of the Douglas County Board of Health. The resolution that you are getting, that the Secretary is passing to you, is a resolution that was passed in December by the Douglas County Board of Health, basically supporting, as it says at the end, comprehensive sex education that is accurate, fact-based, and age-appropriate. And we believe that the content standards that presented before you meet those standards. And also notes in there that since 2004, Douglas County has been in an epidemic phase as declaring STDs as an epidemic. Now, I've been on the Board of Health for the majority of that time, and I've heard things as absurd and uninformed as I can't get an STD because I don't live in a certain part of the county. Over the last couple of years, we've had efforts that have started, and this is the first time in the time I've been on the Board of Health where we have the opportunity for a comprehensive effort with what's going on at the Health Department, what's going on with the Women's Fund, and what you have before you to really attack this in a comprehensive manner to put a dent there. And the fact is, it can't be done without you. No, the approach you're going is comprehensive, and no one entity can handle this approach alone. There were a couple of smirks at the young man that came up and spoke familiarly, but the fact is, I believe his words to me are valuable, him speaking to you, because you are the big doll. And like it or not, people, school districts follow what you do. So somebody from another school district supporting this effort for you to do this is important, because you will lead the pace in regards to what happens in the county with this. Now, in closing, I want to give you a word of encouragement to some degree as somebody that has made this decision on that dies from some other points like you're about to make now. And in reflection and battling this effort as a member of the Board of Health over the last couple of years and with the school boards that have been here, you all have been here before, and in all due respect to the opinions that are here, because I've sit by some of these people in pews and understand them, they're good people. But you were here years ago with school-based health clinics, and people said the earth was going to fall and things were going to come in, and school-based health clinics have been one of the best things that happened to the school district in years. You've been here with YRBS for years. We tried to do this to some degree. You decided to accept YRBS, and it's been some of the best data in helping the Board of Health and other entities attack issues of health here. And I believe this topic, which is evidence-based, has all the right frameworks, is going to be another matter where if you all step up to that degree and approve this, we will move light years forward in addressing STDs and a whole lot of other sexual issues going on here in this county. With that, I thank you for your time and hope that you pass the effort.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Catherine M. Russell.
My name is Catherine M. Russell. I live at 1721 South 108th Street. You have a wonderful opportunity ahead of you. You have an opportunity to make a difference. I am a mother, a grandmother, a wife, a former OPS employee, a former, a retired OPS employee, an elementary school teacher, and elementary administrator. But I am here today to talk to you for my greatest gift of God, and that is being a Your decision is not political, it's not educational, you have a moral decision to I would like for each of you, and I'm going to say this twice so that people have a chance to write it down, and I hope that you'll write it down, I hope you are working from a Bible that is worn out. I hope you are working from a Bible that is worn out. I ask you to read 1 Corinthians, Chapter 6, Verses 18 through 20. I ask you to read, I ask you to know, 1 Corinthians, Chapter 6, Verses 18 through 20. It says, "Flee from sexual immorality. All other sins a man commits are outside of his body, but he who sins sexually sins against his own body. Do you not know that your body is the temple of the Holy Spirit, who is in you, whom you have received from God? You are not your own; you are bought for a price. Therefore honor God and your body." You will someday be judged, we will all be judged, when we meet God. And I would like for God to look at you and say, "You have been a good and faithful servant. You have taken children, you have taken others to heaven." That's what we're here for. Yes, we need to give children an education, but the curriculum that you have, the standards that you have, gives children too much information, gives too much information. It rapes children of their innocence. Information is important, but this gives too much information. It gives unimportant, it gives wrong, it gives some very bad information. What our most important responsibility is, is to get children to heaven, to take others to heaven. These standards have too much information. The book that you're using, Perfectly Normal, that you want to use, Perfectly Normal, it is not perfectly normal. The things that are in there are not perfectly normal. Please find a balance between what we should tell children and what we must not, what is too much. God bless you.
Please keep some things we bring from applause. Thank you. Our next speaker is Ernie Boykin. Ernie?
Sorry, I'm not going to talk about sex. Ernie Boykin, B-O-Y-K-I-N, 7051 Crompoint Avenue, 68104. To the President of the Board, to the Superintendent and Board Members, I'm here this evening to request the protocol or the practice that allows the district to continue to socially To student placement. I wanted a copy of the... The practice and the protocol that allows the district to socially promote students even when they academically are not prepared to go to the next academic level in school, we would like to see a copy of that. We would like to know, the parent that I'm representing would like to know, what the criteria is that you use when you tell a parent who has been told by the teacher that their student is not progressing, that their student is not learning, and they continue to pass the student on. The student now is in the third grade. I was here last year, she cannot read, and so she's having difficulty in school. Maybe the question I should have asked when I went to student placement was, how do you determine when a preschool, private school tells a parent, "No, your child is not capable of going on and should be retained," yet you enroll them in the grade level that is the next grade up? And this has continued for the last three years. The parent and I are going to go to the next level with this, so we need something in writing that shows what you consider when you say that a student should be passed on to the next grade and they're not successful in the grade level that they came from. That's what we'd like to, that's what we'd like to have, and I'm here to request that maybe one of you could tell me, because I'm not going to run from third floor to fifth floor, back down to third floor and up to fifth floor to get the information. The parent is distressed. The child is now knowing that she's different than the other students. The placement that they want to give this child, we have observed that classroom in two different schools, in two different areas of the community, and we refuse to have the child, who has a problem focusing, to be in a classroom with children that are moaning during the day. I've been there in the morning in one class, in the afternoon in the other, and they still have these types of students in that classroom. They have students that have behavioral problems. They have students that are non-verbal. They have students that are blind, and they have behavioral students. They don't have a teacher that comes in and teaches reading, which is one of her disabilities. So we're trying to find out how she's going to be...
Ms. Ray, would you please work with Ms. Boykin and also the Executive Director of the building to get some answers and direction? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dr. Sophia Javed Wessel, S-O-F-I-A-J-A-W-E-D-we-s-s-e-l. I am here today as a public health professional and as a parent of two OPS children. My address is 2002 North 53rd Street, 68104. You all already know very well the effectiveness of comprehensive sex education. I've provided you guys with a brief fact sheet that summarizes some of the well-known research on the importance of up-to-date medically accurate information. You also are all very well aware of the fact that the majority of your parents and students overwhelmingly support a full, up-to-date, updating the curriculum, excuse me. The scientific literature has clearly established that the best time to receive this information is prior to when students engage in sexual behaviors, which makes schools a perfect environment for learning this information. I'll keep this brief by not reiterating all the statistics that I've given you and remind you that I am here today to ask you to not compromise the integrity of the standards that were written in their original form. By eliminating key elements such as medical information about emergency contraception, abortion, gender, and sexual orientation, we will be compromising the health, well-being, and safety of our students. There is, in fact, consensus on what these terms mean and how we should be teaching about them. We should use this information to the best of our ability. There is, excuse me, sorry. I'm asking you to represent the parents, I'm asking you to represent the students. You've collected very sound information using research methods that are... It's impossible for us to accurately represent the values and morals of every OPS student and family, so leave it to the families. We should be presenting the unbiased, value-free facts. Nice and easy, simple, let's do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Roberta Wilhelm.
Good evening. I'm Roberta Wilhelm, R-O-B-E-R-T-A-W-I-L-H-E-L-M. I am the guardian of three boys in OPS schools, North High and Mars Middle and Liberty Elementary. I'm not here tonight as a guardian, I'm here as Executive Director of Girls, Inc. of Omaha. My address, 5119 Capitol Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. So I'm the Executive Director of Girls, Inc. of Omaha, where we inspire girls to be strong, smart, and bold. We serve approximately 1,000 girls a year. The majority of those girls are OPS students. At Girls, Inc. for the past two decades, we have taught comprehensive sex education with parents opting in. The majority of our parents do opt in. 87% or so parents opt in. When you get to the teen years, we have about a 95% opt-in rate from parents for comprehensive sex ed. Our reproductive health programming, health and sexuality programming, is a combination of research-based and evidence-based, and the results show that what we are doing works. Our teen pregnancy rate is less than a fraction of a fraction of 1% of the teen girls that we serve. When you look at the demographic of the girls that we serve and you compare that to the high schools, the OPS high schools... Yes, we teach comprehensive sex ed. Yes, we promote abstinence. Our parents support us, our OPS parents support us. The sky has not fallen at Girls, Inc. ...are taught and discussed and are part of the curriculum and the different lessons that are taught at Girls, Inc. We start at age five, we... For a teenager, girl getting ready to go off to college, obviously would involve many of the standards that were listed on that page. What we're doing works. It's not scary, the parents want it, they're your parents, and I encourage you to accept the standards as they were submitted, not water them down. If you water them down, you will have watered-down results. The youth that you serve will not be as educated, and the results in terms of life-changing teen pregnancies and STDs are just not worth that risk. So I encourage you to support the standards as they were submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Dockery.
My name is John Dockery. I live at 8616 North 57th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm a longtime resident of the Omaha School District. I'm not against sex education, but I am against comprehensive sex education being taught in schools. OPS comprehensive sex education program has failed, and normalizing STDs and sexual activity and giving out condoms is not the answer. I knew little about comprehensive sex when I and 150 others attended the first forum last April here in this room. Human Growth and Development presented results from their phone survey to add LBGT, gender identity, abortion, and emergency contraception. Little information was given about the OPS present sex education program. I was really concerned about the much, about the phone survey results, which seemed to be much higher to me. I then joined a group of concerned citizens, and in August, some members met with the Human Growth and Development Supervisor responsible for the new curriculum. She showed them the Planned Parenthood-endorsed flash curriculum in two or three-hour sessions with great detail. They were all shocked with the pornographic content. We had to purchase the series ourselves to present our concerns to others. We began meeting with civic groups and churches presenting the dangers of all Planned Parenthood-endorsed curriculums. In October, OPS Assistant Superintendent announced in the Omaha Royal Herald the upcoming community forum on October 20th. She asked for input and we rallied a large part of the 1,700 who attended. People were expecting to participate in table discussions... Instead, the meeting was delayed over 30 minutes to start. First, they handed out a list of frequently asked questions. We sat silently for over 10 minutes. Then came the presentation by the PhD from the Med Center on the phone survey, and that was it. No opportunity to ask questions, no small group discussions. It was a total bust. Then the standard survey, which were intended to be used for group discussions, were handed out. They did not have enough printed, so many people left frustrated. The rest of us continued to wait while they made more copies. The packet of 26 pages was intimidating. Some saw the length and bulk of the survey and dismissed it entirely. We were then asked to mail them in or go online where anyone could submit a survey. Then, 10 days later, on October 30th, OPS promoted a Teen Empowerment Day at UNO for over 100 of its school and middle school students. In May, reservations were made for eight classrooms by an employee of OPS. Parents signed consent forms for their child to attend. OPS buses provided transportation. The Women's Fund of Omaha, Planned Parenthood, Get Checked Omaha, Methodist Hospital were cosponsors. Students were given goodie cosponsors. One student who attended described it as a sex concentration camp and seeing things that can't be unseen. Students were given goodie bags of condoms, dental dam, lubricants, and other sexual activity-related items. A date rape video was shown. A co-ed condom relay race was organized. Abortion counselors were there along with OPS teacher chaperones. In only 10 days, this event itself cancels many claims made in OPS frequently asked questions, such as, "OPS says Planned Parenthood has not been part of our curriculum in the past or the future." "OPS believes parents should be primary educators of their children in matters of sexuality." "OPS students will be encouraged to abstain from sexual activity." "OPS will not encourage high-risk sexual behavior." On and on. I've learned over the past nine months, OPS Human Growth and Development officials cannot be trusted. They have, for years, their sex education program has not been transparent. Now they have lied about the answers to the frequently asked questions. The results of today's standard survey, like the previous phone survey, are disappointing. OPS asked for input without explaining how CSE is taught. Students will learn by questioning their values, which is all about indoctrination and at the heart of what's wrong with CSE. Please vote no on these additions to the standards, and please say yes to OPS developing a website to inform and assist parents as primary educators on these controversial subjects. Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker, please hold your pause. Our next speaker is Andrea Scolquin. I'm going to try to spell it. S-K-O-L-K-I-N. Sorry.
I did bring copies. I didn't know if I was supposed to. You want those? Members of the board and Superintendent Evans, my name is Andrea Scolquin. I'll spell that. A-N-D-R-E-A. Scolquin, S-K-O-L-K-I-N. And my home address is 12959 Eagle Run Drive, but I am also the CEO of One World Community Health Centers, whose headquarters is in South Omaha. One World provides culturally respectful, quality, affordable health care to our regions underserved, with our main location in South Omaha, but now with 12 clinical locations throughout Omaha. I am also a parent, though recently graduated students from Omaha Public Schools, and want to thank you for the great education that my students received. Tonight, I'm asking you, as you deliberate, about the updated curriculum standards for human growth and development, to think about the future of our children and of the community. As a parent and as a leader of an organization that provides care to 34,000 individuals, about half of them being children, I see every day and know all too well the impact of lack of knowledge about human growth and development on our region's youth. While most adolescents are healthy by traditional medical standards, a significant number of young people experience some type of health issue by the time they reach their teens. And adolescence is a critical developmental stage for children, marked by accelerated growth and a number of physiological, cognitive, social, and emotional changes that all occur at the same time. Prevention, accurate scientifically-based education, and quality primary care services are particularly critical for this age group, because many of the most serious health problems begin to present themselves at this age time period and are preventable. Sexually transmitted disease rates, as you know, in Douglas County are among the highest in the nation. Adolescents are disproportionately affected by these infections. Young people ages 15 to 24 represent 25% of the sexually active population, but acquire half of all the new STDs and diagnosis of HIV. Roughly one-third of Omaha Public School students, according to the 2014 Douglas County Behavioral Risk Assessment, reported having sex, with 5.5% of those before the age of 13, and almost one-quarter using drugs or alcohol before having sex. 11.7% of students were hit or physically hurt by a boyfriend with multiple partners. Our health center provides a variety of health services, health education, dental, behavioral health care, affordable pharmacy, and numerous supports. But we cannot do everything. We need our schools and our parents to join such as reproductive health problems, oops, and perinatal health problems, cancer, and unreported and thus cannot be treated. Having accurate sex education in schools coupled with that at critical periods in their development.
Thirty seconds. Thank you, and I'm sorry we're having our audio is dying, and it's dying more quickly. So I apologize. Thank you. Our next speaker, Have we lost audio, or is that, do you want to try? Okay.
Okay. I'm Dave Meyer. I'm a prior graduate.
Can you spell your last name and then give your address, please?
M-E-Y-E-R. I'm a prior graduate of Northwest High. I live at 2823 South 165th Avenue. I believe sex ed does need to be taught, but the issue is content and whose responsibility. I believe the schools could be a good advocate for teaching healthy relationship traits and the health risks of promiscuity, but parents should lead the private discussions of intimate sexual expression. The phone survey that was conducted last year overwhelmingly stated, parents wanted to be involved in their students' sex ed. The recent survey, written survey, that the Omaha Women's Fund stated in the Omaha World Hail yesterday, found that 93% of respondents wanted CSE. But do they really know what they are agreeing to? No specific curriculum or contents have been shown, and the new timeline that was just released states the administration, all in one month, starting next month, will select the curriculum resources, begin classroom pilots, and inform parents of their intentions. There's no mention of presenting curriculum to the board for review or giving parents a chance to actually review the resources. One of the CSE curriculums that are available teaches 17 forms of contraception and how the kids can actually do that without the parent's knowledge. How do these parents know, not having seen the curriculum, if the license they're granting with these standards isn't going to go to the similar extreme? It, to me, sounds like the administration is trying to hide something. Trust is a big issue. This is a very sensitive issue. One of the examples of where there's mixed messaging and trust is on the curriculum itself. Before the fall semester, the HGD department needs. Then, literally, in less than 72 hours before and up through the recent community forum that was held on October 20th, the forum said, "Well, we may use parts of it." The Assistant Superintendent in denied to the World Hail in an interview that OPS had even looked at the curriculum. And I raise all this not to point fingers at any individuals, but I think it's important that the board and the parents are aware of the mixed messaging and the apparent desire to confuse and avoid the curriculum discussion, because that's where the rubber meets the road in the classroom. Mr. Dockery has talked about the contents of the sex concentration camp, what a student called that day. That occurred 10 days after the community forum and how it literally destroyed the majority of the FAQ commitments that the administration made to the public. I find it hard to believe if the administration didn't really know what was going on. The administrator that led that and orchestrated that event, which was later found to be called "Let's Get Real About Sex" at UNO, also conducted "Let's Get Real" presentations the prior school year to other area high schools. Additionally, the organizations in attendance who provided items for the goodie bag that John alluded to are many of the same organizations that partner with OPS and the adolescent project that's led by the Omaha Women's Fund to promote CSE. If Planned Parenthood, Douglas County Health, Methodist Health Systems, UNMC, and Get Checked knew what was going on, why didn't OPS? And the very fact that that event went on really points to an integrity issue. I believe that there are other alternatives. CSE is only promised and promulgated by Planned Parenthood. There are other options out there. There's a study out there, and I'm going to leave a copy, a sexual risk avoidance study that was done by 13 professionals here in the state that looked at 13 different studies and recommend four different curriculums that are medically accurate and scientifically tested. I encourage you, as a board, to seriously consider who you're partnering with, the administration, the misleading activity that's going on, and what is the full disclosure that should be communicated to the parents. For the sake of the children of this community, they demand that type of integrity. Thank you very much.
We have now reached the one-hour mark. So Policy 8346 states that the maximum permitted duration for individual speakers is five minutes, and the maximum permitted duration for public comment session will be one hour. At this time, I would entertain a motion. Mrs. Fay?
I move that we suspend the one-hour limitation on public comment in Policy 8346 and permit each person who submitted a request for public comment form but has not yet spoken to speak for their allotted five minutes.
Second.
So that was a motion by Mrs. Fay and a second by, I'm sorry, who made the second? Oh, Mr. Vargas.
I did.
Discussion on that. Mrs. Underwood.
I just have a quick question. How many do we have left? Do you know?
Sorry about that. I meant to tell you that. So we got through 16 speakers, I believe, and we have 31 speakers left. So what was your motion for one hour? No.
My motion was to let everyone who turned in a public comment form speak for the same five minutes that everybody had, the first 16 speakers had.
I second that.
Correct. And Mr. Scanlon?
I think that this is a very split topic, and I think we've heard fully from both sides. And, you know, I appreciate everybody's interest, but, you know, it has been a very similar message from both sides, and I think it's just, at this point in time, I think we need to cap it and move on.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Gotting?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Scanlon?
No.
Snow?
Aye.
Underwood?
Aye.
Vargas?
Aye.
Williams? Fay?
Aye.
That's six aye, two no.
So we needed a two-thirds majority, and that is two-thirds. All right. So our next speaker is Leisha Green.
Do we have any way to listen to the recording?
I'm sorry. Are you the speaker? Our next
Well, I just was wondering, sure, many others are wondering the same thing that I've even spoke at. I do a part of the underpants, so if you're not, you're speaking into it.
You know what? You can listen to the recording of what got picked up. Our board is going out, and we're trying to work as quickly as we can to get through as many people as we can before the board completely goes, and then we won't have any microphone ability for televised or for broadcast. So with that, we'll move on to Leisha Green.
Lisa, L-I-S-H-E-R-E-E-N, and my address is 6728 Raymond Avenue, 68104. I wanted to speak, and I want to reiterate, as I did last time, about the historical and the foundation of this whole curriculum of human growth and development and CSE. And before I even go there, I'm just going to start at the end. I don't know how many of you have seen Maafa 21. It's M-A-A-F-A. It's information about genocide and Planned Parenthood, which started off as the Birth Control League, and they changed their name to Planned Parenthood. And their agenda was to wipe out the black race and other races of color. And their agenda and their alliance with the eugenicists has not changed. They still have the same alliances and the same people on those boards. And I am really appalled that some of our leadership in the North Omaha area are aligned with this group, these groups and these people. but it was knowledge. Knowledge is power, and knowledge comes with understanding and wisdom. Information in the hands of the unlearned is like a loaded gun. It's very dangerous. I also want to address, you know, there's a bit of folk wisdom that I read. It says, "If a farmer sees a turtle sitting atop a fence post, he can be sure it did not get there by itself." And I want to assure you, we're not here by chance, but it's planned. This has been planned. I looked at some of the resources I looked at some of the resources that will be available to teachers if you pass this curriculum or these standards, and that's one thing, and it's the sex ed library. And the sex ed library is brought to you, and this is stated on their site, on the sex ed library, is brought to you by SECCAS. And SECCAS is the Sexual Information Education Council of the United States. And as you, as board members know, I bought this book last time, Stolen, Honor Stolen Innocence, which is the Kenzie Institute, all about the Kenzie Institute and their perverted activities on sexual behavior. And Paige, or the Kenzie Institute... He participated in the activities at the Kenzie Institute, and he also was a part of the Professional Sexological Society as the Kenzie Institute. They also, the ASSEC, the American Association of Sexuality Educators and Counselors and Therapists, is an outgrowth of the Kenzie Institute. This is stealth fields of sexology and sex ed to overthrow a millennia of evidence-based human experience. There was a movie about Kenzie, and in the movie, which was a correct statement, any sex education that anybody had has had in the past 50 years comes right from the Kenzie Institute. America has gone from purity to promiscuity and from devotion to deviance, and you can be sure we did not get there by accident. Stuff that they want to show, possibly the flash curriculum, or something similar, is illegal. They couldn't buy it at the store, and it would be illegal, but this is the... ASSEC applies the Kenzie model and has long utilized the SAR technique as educational Experience at the Institute for the Advanced Study...
Thirty seconds.
...of human sexuality and how they use sensory overload. Sex act to the tune of Tchaikovsky's Violin Concerto until he was so disoriented that he had vertigo. Now, these are the foundation and basis of...
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Jeanne...Jeanne E. Weiss. Jeanne E. Weiss is the next speaker. Please hold your applause. That would be great.
Good evening. My name is Jeanne, J-E-A-N-E-E, Weiss, W-E-I-S-S. I live at 9917 Essex Drive, Omaha, 68114. I'm speaking to you today from many perspectives and with many hats. I'm a constituent within Mr. Scanlon's district. I'm an OPS parent of Rowan, my four-year-old daughter who receives speech services at Crest Ridge Elementary and will be a kindergartner next year. I'm a former human growth and development teacher for the district. I'm a community supporter. I am a Douglas County Health Department Board of Health member, and I am CEO of Building Healthy Futures, a nonprofit with a vision to support learning for underserved children by improving access to quality health care. I am here to support your decision and encourage your vote for the revised standards as proposed, standards that are medically accurate, age-appropriate, and based in best practice. Just 18 months ago, the district approved the OPS strategic plan. Every student, every day, prepared for success. ...result of, and as I quote, "A collaborative effort resulting in a comprehensive plan which reflects a balance of all stakeholder priorities." Today, again, you are being asked to find a solution that reflects a balance of all stakeholder priorities, and given the thoughtful process followed by the district that included numerous opportunities for community balance, or community input, balance can be found. The proposed curriculum standards provides options for all parents. Balance can be found. Assuming the independent survey reflecting 93% of OPS parents want comprehensive sex education for their children is accurate, these standards deliver. For parents willing and equipped to provide sex education to their children in the home rather than the school, the proposed curriculum standards do provide parents the opportunity to opt out of the curriculum in its entirety or in part. Balance can be found. The district's strategic plan made a promise to, and I quote, "To represent a bold vision for the future that will require us to change the way we operate." I hope that promise continues to hold true. I recognize the bold path is not the most easiest traversed, but one that must be navigated with thoughtful, with thought and advocacy for the students of Omaha Public Schools. Your continued leadership and that of your colleagues have created a new direction for students throughout the community. Please hold steadfast to the spirit of the strategic plan and support the revised standards as proposed. An inclusive, and this is the word from the strategic plan, "An inclusive education that honors parent choice for all and ensures the highest standards from education are followed." The students of Omaha Public Schools deserve nothing less. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Our next speaker is Gwen Easter.
Hello. My address is 2895 Benny Street, and I just want to talk to you all today.
Can we just go ahead and spell your...say your name and then spell your last name?
Gwen, and Easter, E-A-S-T-E-R. I want to talk about the comprehensive sex education and why I'm against it. I believe that parents, it should be left up to parents to teach your children about comprehensive sex education. I sat and I listened to all these people talk about statistics and all these things, but, you know, kids have had sex for years and years, and it's not going to change anything. Y'all say it's not going to change anything. What you guys are wanting to do is talk about homosexuality, masturbation, and all these things to kids. That's the real agenda. That's the real agenda that Omaha Public Schools is pushing. The same-sex stuff. That's the real agenda here. And we need to tell the truth about what it really is. It's not about keeping our kids from having sex. OPS got to come in, and they got to do it. That's nonsense. Parents don't have... Omaha Public Schools and all of these people who want to sit up here and push our daycare businesses out of business...
That's right.
...so that they can take control over all children. Because y'all already know it's not a God. I don't have to tell y'all that kids, yes, kids are going to do things. They're going to do things. They're going to go behind their parents' back and have sex some... Bottle of alcohol to help them, to help with alcoholism? No! You're not going to do that. Y'all need to stop with all this hitting agenda stuff. Y'all coming down 30th Street, buying up every, all the properties, trying to push our businesses out there just so y'all can have control over children at an early age. Teach immoral things to our kids. You think God is pleased with it? No, he ain't. He's not. He is not pleased with what y'all are doing. He's not. So, y'all stop pushing y'all agendas. We have a right, and parents have a right, to teach their children. Y'all stop lying to them, and if that's the case, that there are some parents who want y'all to teach their kids some of that, then create something just for their children. Don't do it for everybody else's kids, because y'all not speaking for everyone else. Our kids are lost, and they need help. Our families are suffering. Kids are dying on the street because of this nonsense. Y'all are helping creating the problem. Y'all are not the problem solver. Y'all helping create the problems.
That's right. Telling them they can do whatever they want to do instead of setting the record.
And I'm tired of it. I deserve my community, and I've helped children and families in this community. Y'all pick and choose who y'all want to sit on boards and who going to be mine, and if you don't agree with those who got all the money...
Come on.
...then they don't want you, they don't want you to come to the table. They want to discredit you. And I know y'all know who I'm talking about.
One minute.
And as for the girls club, I know parents who have taken their kids out of there too because they're teaching comprehensive sex education to their kids. So, let's be honest and tell the truth about that. Y'all want to stop, that's what we're going to say, at the community center, at the same type of preschool, childcare. Y'all going to stop telling parents that our daycares are no more than babysitting daycares when we work hard to help educate children too. I'm tired of that stuff.
Applause. Sasha Forsen. Okay. The next speaker is Gina Miller.
Sasha's here. I am the mother of a fourth-grade student at Picotte Elementary, OPS. An update to OPS's Human Growth and Development curriculum, because I believe that my daughter and her peers deserve access to up-to-date and factual information in a safe environment, not just what, you know, they hear from other students on the playground. I want them to have, I want them to be able to make informed decisions about their bodies as they grow. As a community, I believe it is our responsibility to give our children the tools that they need to make informed decisions in this changing world that we live in. I believe that this curriculum provides facts. I think that we can, you know, debate morality all day long, but I think it's really important to provide facts, and then, as everyone has discussed, let the families decide what is moral. Thank you. In addition, while myself and many of you in this room have taken it upon ourselves to teach our children about the topics that are covered in the proposed updated curriculum, we must not be blind to the fact that not every child has someone willing to discuss these topics with them. And it could be for a variety of reasons. I know that for me, it's very scary to have to be able to talk to my child about those things, because I'd like her to stay nine forever, but I don't, I don't think that's going to happen as much as I try. And I have to not be naive and come to the facts with, come to reality with the fact that my daughter is going to grow up and she's going to need the tools to keep herself safe. I believe that it's crucial that OPS students are not prevented from learning about topics that can deeply impact their lives. On behalf of my family, please move forward with the proposed updates to the sex education curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you. Gina Miller is the next speaker. And then after Gina, we'll have Rachel Pinkerton.
Gina Miller, 4511 North 167th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. OPS parent of two children in seventh and ninth grade. I would just like to ask the board, before you cast your vote on adopting these new standards, I would like you to stop and think about what you're really telling 50,000 public schoolchildren in our district. You may believe that you are giving them all the information to make wise decisions when really you are telling them there really are no consequences for their actions. But let's just take a moment and think what maybe the kids might be thinking with these new revisions. We'll take a class period or two and tell them that abstinence is the best policy for you at this age. We will brush over the fact that the only 100% sure way not to get an STD or to get pregnant is to abstain from sex, period. But then, we will follow up, I believe I read in the new standards, possibly for two weeks, about if you do have sex, which we're kind of saying we are sure you will. If you use condoms, you will probably be safe from STDs. If you use birth control pills or condoms, you should be safe from getting pregnant. If for some reason you still get pregnant, don't worry, you won't have to deal with any of the consequences of those choices, because we are going to give you all the information you need to terminate that pregnancy by giving you knowledge of using the morning-after pill or how to get services to have an abortion. We would never want you to bring another life into this world, because there's no way you would be able to care for it, and you will be doomed to a life of poverty if you ever do. I don't agree that teens should be having sex and that they should be getting pregnant and bringing children into the world, but I do, I am a pro-life parent. We will take a significant period of time telling our children that you should treat people who have different sexual identities with respect and dignity, which all people should do at all times. What about the tall, short, thin, fat, black, white, smart, academically challenged kids? Why are we not telling all of our kids that we need to treat everyone with respect and dignity, whatever they are dealing with at this point in their lives? And they all are dealing with something. I have heard that... Our pediatrician went into great detail about STDs and whether the girls were sexually active or thinking about it, and gave them... Those of you who are comfortable in adopting these revisions because you are offering an opt-out, what is prohibiting anyone from eliminating... If we go ahead and adopt the standards and increase, or assure the ability to increase the controversial topics, we have no assurances that our opt-outs will be able to be survived. What does an opt-out really mean? Do any of you know? I don't. Do they sit in the library? Do the kids sit in the library? We have already extended their learning day 25 minutes, where my child and does, my child sits and does silent reading at the end of the day. So, now they'll have an additional hour and 40 minutes to silent read while they opt out of the curriculum. Keep hearing that we have to add these controversial issues to decrease STDs in our community. I don't want the increased STDs that we have. We do talk about it in the current curriculum. I'm not sure how adding abortion and sexual identities reduces the STD rates. Let's remember, OPS already has medically accurate, age-appropriate, comprehensive sex education in OPS. We currently discuss STDs. We name them. We show pictures. We show them how to get them. My kids have taken this curriculum. They bring home all of their homework. I know what we are teaching. I keep hearing we must update the STDs...oh, sorry.
One minute.
And there has been a proposal, also, there's also been a proposal to run dual curriculums, the one that we currently have and the updated one. I have not heard any further discussion about possibly doing that as an option. I please, I would ask you to please vote no on the revised standards, and thank you for giving us time to continue open conversation. Thank you. The next speaker is Rachel Pinkerton. And then after Rachel Pinkerton, Megan Hunt.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Pinkerton, R-A-C-H-E-L-P-I-N-K-E-R-T-O-N. I reside at 5832 Corby Street. I was an OPS mom for 15 years. Personally, I'm a mighty bunny, Omaha Benson, class of '71. In spring of 1971, I learned that my composite SAT score was the fifth highest in the state, and I accepted a four-year region scholarship. At UNL, I first experienced what radio talk show host Timmy Bruce calls "The Left's Bullet Train Into Moral Relativism," attempting to drag our entire society into gruesome descent into moral chaos. Ms. Bruce, a self-identified lesbian, is a recovering leftist, though she maintains membership in the community I call "Baby Killers Are Us." membership in the community I call "Baby Killers Are Us." She recently blasted the moral terrorism of Planned Parenthood in The Washington Times. If you could just while giggling about wanting a Lamborghini. How dare OPS claim sexuality education standards has no influence over the revised Human Growth and Development instruction OPS seeks to impose. at leftists who are openly and willingly sacrificing children in a vain and self-obsessed drive to quench their appetite for the young. Though gay, Ms. Bruce is a champion of heteronormativity, such as is denounced by National Comprehension Sexuality Education Standards. About the promotion of such gender confusion, Bruce says, "The unforgivable crime is if we remain silent, allowing children to be sacrificed on the altar of political correctness as we sit and watch malignant narcissists make a wild grab for children." Well, it won't be then in my name, and I contend that every decent hetero and homosexual person out there should be equally outraged. Amen, Tammy Bruce. What price does our community pay for adults refusing to do the work of finding the intersection of our values in order to present a united standard of behavior, signposts for right and wrong, to guide our children? Look at the chaos in Omaha. Consider the cost in lost human potential, in personal and family anguish, in budget dollars for law enforcement, criminal justice, and corrections. What is the tally for patching up confused kids who respond to the vacuum of cohesive moral leadership in this community by joining organizations that encourage them to express themselves with gunfire as they struggle with fundamental desires for liberty and dignity which can't be satisfied without accountability?
Come on.
Shame on us. Shame especially on OPS for the bad faith manipulation that passes for community engagement, evident in this process, and also the decision to extend the school day. Omaha children use deserve to be led by legitimate authority that requires school authorities embrace their role as subordinate to families in the lives of our children. Please retain the current Human Growth and Development standards until there's a level of trust between the district and the public. We need to be informed in writing specifically what the district will be teaching about sexuality.
One minute.
Moreover, our kids deserve to be reminded that their families, who properly outrank the school in the education chain of command, are working in concert with professionals on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Hunt, and then after Megan, Amelia Denhart.
Hi, guys. There's at least one more of us. My name's Megan Hunt, last name H-U-N-T, and my address is 4903 Underwood Avenue, Apartment 1, Omaha 68132. I'm here today as an OPS parent in District 3. I have a daughter at Dundee Elementary, and I'm also representing CHEER, which stands for Comprehensive Health Education and Equal Responsibility. Nobody who supports comprehensive sexual education is opposed to a family's right to teach values to their children. But offering our public schoolchildren a curriculum that doesn't address healthy relationships, consent, and LGBT issues, in addition to public health facts and figures, would not be respecting the value and importance of our public health institution. This is our opportunity to do better. I want to reassure the school board that they have the public support to recommend the proposed updates to the Human Growth and Development curriculum. I also want you to, I also want to encourage you all to pass the original proposed standards for the Health and Development curriculum with integrity, and not change them or edit them in the interest of false compromise at the last hour before the vote on the 20th. These changes are not going to make a difference at all with the opposition. None of them are going to be suddenly on board with a curriculum they've been railing against since day one. You've had the facts and research to pass these important curriculum changes, and I would caution against the tendency to over-edit it for political reasons, just because you find you got some extra time. Please have the courage, on behalf of the children you were elected to represent, to move forward with a decision that includes complete and thorough curriculum standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amelia Denhart.
I live in District 8, and for safety reasons, I'm not going to give you the address. I live next to Brian High, District 8 with Lacey America. I'm going to speak against the curriculum will have oral sex and anal sex. Well, the flash curriculum in high school, 3rd edition, page 7 of Lesson 4, says, quotation, "Sexual behavior describes what someone does sexually, oral, anal, or vaginal sex, making out, etc. Sometimes sexual behavior matches a person's sexual orientation, and sometimes it does not. For example, a person who identifies as straight might have had sex or made out with someone of the same gender." Close quotation marks. And that's just to mention once. It appears in many times, if you have read the curriculum. The flash curriculum has much emphasis on feelings. When a teacher does not teach what is right or wrong and emphasizes feelings, we can expect our young people to do what it feels good. If our young people adopt that idea, which they mostly will probably do, then we will have a promiscuous, promiscuous lifestyles in many more of our children or young people. The most important sex organ is the brain. Please, please teach the students to use their brain, to use their mind. Not just to put condoms to protect their bodies. Teach them to think. Help them to have big dreams and to work hard to achieve them. Help them to develop their own talents and abilities. Teach them that success is not free. It costs, but they can achieve it. They can do it. Let's work together. Let's empower our children to say no to sex outside of marriage. Teach them to have self-control. They are not animals. They don't have to follow their own instincts. Teach them values. Teach them to be honest, truthful. Teach them to be, to have a good work ethic. Teach them to respect God, to respect each other, wherever their condition is, and to respect their own bodies.
One minute.
Challenge them to have virtues. You, all of you, God put you where you are here today, in this time of history, for a reason. Make the difference. Whatever you do will touch many thousands and probably millions of lives. So I ask you, please, vote no. Vote no. Vote against the sexual education.
30 seconds.
God bless you, God bless OPS, and God bless our children, and God bless America.
The next speaker is Carolyn Magreca. Carolyn Magreca. Speaker after Carolyn Magreca is Mary Jane Trumper. Oh, Mary Jane, you're second. Sorry.
I've been a substitute teacher for 12 years, and I got the privilege of being in a Human Growth and Development class, but I also had the privilege of knowing beforehand what So I went to the principal and said, 15% of the time, these condoms do not work. The principal agreed with me, and so I told the class that, when I showed the stupid video, that 15% of the time, they didn't work, and I was just guffawed. I mean, the children had not been taught that at all. They had just been promoted, the condoms. Also, when you're a substitute teacher, you get to ask questions of other teachers. Planned Parenthood has been in Omaha Public Schools. I mean, I asked, not in the Human Growth Development, maybe, but in the PE classes. Teachers would tell me, sure, Planned Parenthood comes. We want our kids to be happy. When they are involved sexually, they are generally not happy. They're worried about this, or worried about that. So if we can teach them to say no to tobacco, no to alcohol, no to drugs, we can also teach them to say no to sexual activity. We expect them to perform high in academics, athletics. Why can't we also teach them to be performing high in their moral standards? And be happy in their life? Thank you very much. Thank you. Next speaker is Mary Jane, and after Mary Jane, Jesse Martinez.
I'm Dr. Ed Trumper, her husband, and I got called back to the hospital. I'm 10 or 12 slots down. With your permission, I'd like to exchange slots.
Okay.
Thank you. My last name is spelled T-R-U-E-M-P-E-R. I live at 5306 Isard Street. I'm a pediatrician who practices at two area hospitals. I'm also a faculty member at both of our university hospitals, and also at UNL. I'm a medical researcher, and I also teach thousands of students over my 30 years of practice in many disciplines. Now, despite all the acrimony and hubbub that has surrounded the issue of comprehensive sex education for the past number of months, there have been a number of good things that have come out of this. First of my 13 years in Omaha, I don't think I've ever seen an issue that has been brought so much passion to the discussion of an aspect in public education in OPS than CSE. You got the public's attention, and they are involved. They should be viewed as a good thing. As Mr. Evans, our school superintendent, and my neighbor, told me at the October 20th meeting, when we had 1,500 attendees, boy, I wish we could get this kind of set on the fringes, now feel involved for the first time. The African-American and Latin American communities are fully engaged on our finding They should be equally valued in this community. Last, this CSE issue has fundamentally changed the public's view and its role in public education. The laissez-faire attitude that the public seems to have had with public education, in my mind, is over. People are taking it seriously, and I think they should, will continue, to have a rising participation at school and OPS levels in future educational endeavors. By my count, you have mustered now about 2,000 activists and maybe 50 to 100 community leaders, most of whom are parents, being more deeply involved in their children's education. In short, the good news is, you got 2,000 activists and 100 leaders. The bad news is, you got 2,000 activists and 100 leaders. Now, I support a component of sex education in the classroom, but contrary to others, open-ended support for whatever the school district wants to do, I have some qualifiers to my support. First, there is a saying, "Judge a person by the content of their questions and not by their answers." The overarching question seems to be, what do we need to do in changing our sex education program to cover new material to match the changing paradigm of sexual behavior amongst preteens and teenagers, so that they are armed with the right information to make good decisions? There is a drumbeat carte blanche answer that I have heard from almost every person supporting CSE, which has come from, has come before this board, spoken at the October 20th public meeting or to the media. And that statement is, "We will offer evidence-based, medically accurate, age-appropriate education to address issues of..." Then equivocation. That is a problem. A huge problem. Is it because you don't have the evidence, or you don't have the courage based on your data to say what you really think is needed? So what is the problem you're trying to address? The continued rise of STD in our community? Rate of sexual promiscuity amongst our teenagers, or rate of teenage pregnancy? Improving understanding of sexual orientation? Recognizing and handling sexual predation either from fellow students or others? Or all the above? Without identifying the right question or questions and deciding how to address them to our youth and their families, you run the real risk of missing the mark to the fundamental educational objectives to serve the long-term welfare for our kids. Now, I'm gonna jump ahead. I want to say that I looked at these studies myself, that everyone is talked about as evidence-based, more than 130. What I find in the data is that what is supposed to be that says that CSE effectively handles these issues is very sparse. In fact, it is about as sparse as the abstinence-based programs dealing with those long-term health, sexual health endeavors. But guess what?
30 seconds.
They're about the same in their ability to effectively modify children's sexual behaviors, at best at rates of D minus. In my mind, the right question is, how do we educate our students and our childrens to understand their bodies, their sexualities, and make good decisions in the context of their lives, their entire lives? If you want to make a lasting impression on the kids, both groups, the parents and the schools, have to be involved. Successful kids, I like in building a strong brick house. The school
South 38th Street, Bellevue, Nebraska. And I am here in behalf of
Can you just spell your last name?
Martinez. M-A-R-T-I-N-Z. Will you stand with me? I am here with a, with a group of our community, in representation of myself and them. And I want to talk to you about comprehensive sex. We totally disagree and disapprove of this comprehensive sex in the OPS. It is false that this comprehensive sex will improve students. It is true and proven with schools that does not work, does not work. Improve, it does not work to improve them, but only to disrupt the minds of the students. Is it, is it the goal of OPS to rob the innocence of our children? Is it the goal OPS to kill the morality that we, as parents, try so hard to build in our, in our children? Or is it the goal of OPS Or is it the goal of OPS to destroy the opportunity our children have success in life? With all this garbage of comprehensive sex in their minds? Open this can of worms that comes straight from the pits of hell and suffer the consequences for the rest of your lives. They will face the consequences of doing so. I would encourage you to do the right thing, OPS Board, and, and one thinking of this, anyone thinking of placing a gun in a children's hand and thinking that he will not hurt themselves should have their minds examined. In the same token, placing all this information in the children and think that they will not use it? Should think about it, because they will use it. Lastly, let's protect them and not hurt them. One last thing. We ask you to vote no to this comprehensive sex in OPS. Thank you.
The next speaker is Bob Blank.
Thank you, and thank you, Board, for extending the time so everybody could be heard. Some came a long way. I had the opportunity to get copies of these studies from OPS. You folks provided them to me. I wrote them cover to cover, and I found what, what many people are saying, that these studies don't think that parents are the best source of information and education regarding the sexual conduct and mores of their children. And I only had to look at this study, this is the latest one, and Christopher Fisher is a UNC sex researcher. He's written such riveting studies as exploring sexuality, education opportunities, at in-home sex toy parties in the United States, perceptions of condom fit and feel and condom access among African-American men who have sex with men, and experiences of condom fit and feel among African-American men who have sex with men. Should people with Mr. Fisher's background be making policies for the Omaha Public School system? And I, I also brought with me today two blue bags, but only one of them is the blue bag that was being referred to by several speakers tonight. OPS held a sex concentration camp, it was referred to that by one of your students, in October 2015, that featured Planned Parenthood representatives. You folks said you don't deal with Planned Parenthood. You've told the pro-life people, you've told the Catholics, you've told folks that for decades, but that's just a lie, because you do, and you did. And these items were given to students in a goodie bag, and I've got, you know what I have here, because you've seen this, we took it to you. I have a Planned Parenthood, excuse me, I have a Planned Parenthood packet here with information on how to get a hold of them. I have a condom here, and there are several of them in there. I have a mouth dam, and we're not even going into that. And it's just, it's just, it's sad when we see that. Those children that were there got these goodie bags. Some of them there were in middle school, not high school. abortion, LGBT practices, even encourages our children to question whether they should have been born a boy or a girl. They ask, they ask that question. people who provided the bags you gave away. So my question is, several things. They did this in partnership with Planned Parenthood and OPS. My question to Dr. Philippi, if he were here, is, is Methodist Health Systems in partnership with Planned Parenthood and OPS, and do they refer... The health clinics that Mr. Rogers referred to refer people for abortion? And if they refer people for contraceptives? If they refer people to Planned Parenthood at all? OPS lied to Omahans when they said Planned Parenthood has no part of their sex ed curriculum. The curriculum makes abortion, and a great many people, in fact, the majority of Omahans are against abortion. They believe abortion is the murder of unborn children. In fact, my master, Kurt Dodd, testified several times when he was in Florida, that abortion is the murder of unborn children. This curriculum makes abortion contraceptive, the homosexual lifestyle, and sex itself at any age seem normal to these children. That's wrong. I urge you to reject adding these items to the current sex ed program and to leave it as it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Del Greily. Del Greily. Okay, Del Greily. All right, we'll move on to Salvador Mejia. Salvador Mejia. Mejia, Mejia. Oh, there we go.
Hello, my name is Salvador Mejia, M-E-J-I-A. I live at 1734 Arcirco in OPS District 9. Mr. Vargas is my OPS Board representative. I attend Creighton Prep, but I have two brothers in OPS, and I have many reasons to oppose to this CSE curriculum. One reason is that it is a perverted curriculum, and it's pornographic, and some will even say it's child abuse. I am concerned that CSE curriculum will affect my brothers' and other students' morality. Parents have the fundamental right to teach their children about this delicate nature of sexuality between a man and woman.
You know, I'm going to stop again and ask if everyone could please just hold the applause down, so that the speakers can finish speaking.
OPS will say that research supports CSE and that abstinence education does not work, but in reality, there is research that supports positive results for abstinence-only education. A significant, a significant amount of teens choose to remain pure, especially when parents are their primary educators. Thank you all of the Board members for listening. Please vote no to CSE.
Thank you. Please hold your applause. The next... Mark Bonkowitz. All right. Joseph Pachunca. Joseph Pachunca.
Sorry, my name's kind of hard. I'm, I live at 8403 Pacific Street. It's Pachunca, P-A-C-H-U-N-K-A. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm not as impassioned, but I just wanted to, I'm a medical student. Comprehensive sex ed is very important to me and a lot of my friends and future... Sick people that walk through my door, the happier I'll be. So please, thank you for supporting comprehensive sex ed, and we hope that you vote yes. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, as I called before, Mark Bonkowitz. Did not hear that. Oh, there it is.
Madam President, members of the Board, my name is Mark Bonkowitz, M-A-R-K, Bees in Blue, O, Mrs. Nancy, K-I-E-W-I-C-Z. I live at 11129 Z Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I would like to start with a question, and it is, is it okay to make a donation while a person is here? Because I would like to start with a $20 bill to put in the pot, so we can have decent speakers that aren't cutting out all the time, so we can really hear the speakers when they're talking. It is so frustrating to come here and not be able to hear. So, I would like to specifically address the proponents for comprehensive sex education, because you are full steam, forward, let's go, it's all wonderful, we've heard the mantra of the three things, whether it is scientifically based, medically accurate, and age appropriate. Well, there's a lot of citizens here who disagree with that. And so I would just encourage the Board to delay your vote on CSE standards until the parents have had a six-month time period to review the curriculum. You're talking about the big picture standards up here. The devil is in the details. Okay? We need to know what is in there. How can you, as representatives of the people who elected you, make a vote without using the curriculum? And how can you, in good conscience, do that without letting the people see it? Now, there's a lot of places where this curriculum could be held. It can be at the public library, so the people can go in there for free. It could be at the library at the school. You could have it here at OPS headquarters, so that people could come in. But let us see what's in there. The devil's in the details. It's in the lesson plans, it's in the textbooks, it's in the videos, it's in the online modules, it's in the pamphlets. We've done our research. This comprehensive sex education started in Massachusetts in 2000. That very same year, people from Planned Parenthood and other pro-gay organizations took middle school children off-site, had a sex camp, and taught them fisting. That's really serious stuff, when parents don't know about it. And that's the decision that you're going to be opening the door to if you don't allow people to see what is in the curriculum. What's happening in the state of Washington? Because I went from Massachusetts to Washington. In 2010, there are middle school girls who have an IUD implanted in them during school hours without the parent's permission, without their knowledge. I thought we had to have permission to give them an aspirin in school. Okay? So, in summary, if OPS is so proud of your curriculum, you ought to be happy to share it with parents online, at the public libraries, and at every school... Curriculum, and then let's see what the percentage really is. Because I'm confident, when the people have six months to review it, you'll find out your 93% is going to be upside down, and you'll be less than 40%. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with me.
Thank you. Please hold your applause, please.
I heard a lot of clapping, and I think you called my name. So, my name is Barbara Gard, B-A-R-B-A-R-A-G-A-R-D, and my address is 4719 Curtis Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68104. I am a professional educator with degrees in elementary education from California State University, Los Angeles, and in educational administration from the University of Nebraska-Omaha. I have served as both a classroom teacher and a principal in California, Nebraska, and overseas. Tonight, you're going to hear recommendations regarding updating the human growth and development curriculum for Omaha Public Schools. It is self-evident that risky health behaviors, smoking, drinking, using addictive drugs or sexual activity, will have a detrimental effect on academic achievement. The dangers of smoking, drinking, addictive drugs, STDs, and the dangers of human trafficking should be included in the health curriculum at the middle and high school levels. That does not justify the adoption of the National Comprehensive Sex Ed curriculum into the schools from grades four to 12. Most of the states mandating CSE are using curriculum developed by Planned Parenthood or other organizations that are an outgrowth of Planned Parenthood. These curriculums, such as Flash and Get Real, claim to be scientifically based, but they are actually little more than a how-to manual for every kind of sexual activity imaginable. The focus is on all pleasurable, physical aspects of sexual activity, while ignoring the health, relational, psychological, and spiritual consequences of premarital sexual activity. Yet you are considering exposing the upper elementary through high school students of this district to these materials in their public school classrooms. Let me explain to you, as a professional educator, why I am so opposed to OPS going down this path that will make risky health behaviors far more pervasive than they already are. As a resident of North Omaha, I am well aware that teenage girls in our city have among the highest rates of STDs in the nation. This curriculum will only make this situation worse. I know you are truly concerned about the schools in your district. That is why you chose to serve on this board. Let's take a few minutes... Honesty, hard work, teamwork, et cetera. That's wonderful. Yet you want to teach sexual activity in a quote-unquote "scientific" framework, free from all moral context. By teaching these things, I... Parents to gain permission to take their young people to a youth empowerment day at UNO, and then present them with sexual materials from Planned Parenthood, including handing out condoms, something you told parents you would never do 10 days earlier. You are teaching our children to lie to accomplish their goals. To behave like that, you have... Sexual materials to our students. When you think abstinence is impractical, you have undermined the character trait of self-control that you claim to teach.
One minute.
The primary concern of any school district is guaranteeing that students in our public schools have the best possible education to prepare them to be productive members of society, able to fulfill their full potential. For that reason, the curriculum in our schools should focus on basic essentials to give each student a firm foundation in life. What you are doing is taking time away from those basic essentials, reading, writing, math, these kinds of things, in order to teach things that could best be taught by the parents. The truth is, national surveys show 80 to 95% of parents do not want their children sexually active in high school. You would better serve our students, our citizens, if you were training parents, and how best to talk to their own children about their personal standards of sexual conduct.
Would you please hold your applause? My mic is going out very rapidly, so thank you for speaking, so that we can move on. Otherwise, the speakers behind you are not being able to be heard. Deanna Reibach. And after Deanna Reibach, Amy Dick, Amy Dickis.
You guys are like so patient. Thank you for doing this. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. First, I want to thank you for your commitment to my children and to the children of... First, I want to thank you for your commitment to my children and to the children of this city. My name again is Deanna Raebuck. I'm sorry, I forgot to spell it. It's D-E-A-N-N-A, last name Raebuck, R-A-B-U-C-K. My address is 8430 Keystone Drive. I've never been able to figure out which district I'm in because it's right on the line. So, whatever. You may or may not know who I am. I have been given the name #PurityMom. Despite my portrayal of my now infamous video, I do not believe that you are my enemy. I want to know that my opinion matters to you. Our kids are the future of this city, and we all want what we believe is best for them. You have been given an opportunity to listen to the parents and taxpayers of this city. One thing that I believe needs to be recognized is the diversity represented by us. You have captured the attention of every community in Omaha. I hope that we have captured your attention as well. Because we trust you to make these decisions. We are at home doing our jobs while you are here doing yours. I want to believe that a public education is a wonderful opportunity for my five daughters to learn alongside people of other races and cultures. It is also an opportunity for them to learn from others. They will learn invaluable things I could never teach them myself. I recognize that the results of your survey that Dr. Tibbetts presented to us shows that 91% of parents want to see a combination of abstinence and prevention taught in the Human Growth and Development Program. Might I suggest an alternate survey result? One that states when parents are informed of what abstinence education is, they prefer it two to one. This is not about hiding our children from a big, bad, scary sex monster in the classroom. In fact, I think we all believe that ignorance can only be defeated by knowledge. This is about giving our children an opportunity to learn beyond just factual information and giving them the skills to make sophisticated and responsible decisions. In the proposed content standards that were given to us in the fifth grade, you were proposing a standard of, "The most common way for someone to get a bloodborne pathogen is to participate in high-risk sexual behaviors, or share a needle with another person who is infected." Which is followed with, "There are medicines to help people with bloodborne pathogens live longer and healthier lives." Where are the proposed standards for the history of AIDS? Or what it looks like to die of HIV or AIDS? Or the worldwide impact AIDS has had? Where are the standards for talking about the side effects of these medications? Who is going to explain what high-risk sexual behavior is to my 10-year-old? One of the arguments that I have routinely heard is that the expansion of comprehensive sex education is opt-in, opt-out. You have all been very upfront with the fact that you were looking at national standards. How are you addressing reflecting national standards when, as of January 1st, 2015, 22 states and the District of Columbia require public schools to teach sex education, 20 of which mandate sex education and HIV education? These are per federal mandates. What plans do you have set in place to maintain the opt-in, opt-out option when even our state Unicameral is partnering with organizations that advocate for this mandated education? You have made it very clear by publicly stating that Planned Parenthood hasn't had any involvement in the current curriculum or proposed standards. Why do you want them involved in anything at all? As a parent of five daughters, three in OPS schools now, I plead with you, please do developing what is best for our students. You have a wide-open door to a whole bunch of people that care about the future of our city. Please do not break our trust in you. Our trust, our ... our trust, oh, excuse me. We don't want another fact sheet. We want clear-cut and truthful answers that lead to conversations regarding the expansion of the current comprehensive sex education and its influencers. I want to be in a position to support my children's teachers and nurses to teach. Help me to accomplish this.
Thank you so much. The next speaker is Amy Dickis. And then after Amy, Mary Jane Trumper.
My name is Amy Dickis, A-M-Y-D-I-C-K-A-S. I live in OPS. I am a parent of six children who do not attend OPS schools. My concern here is really about where this is headed, and about really the impact it's going to have on the culture, because my kids are going to be living and working with OPS kids. And, you know, a lot of good points have been made, so I'm not going to repeat what's already been said. But I am really, I'm an opponent of the changes, and I ask that you really reconsider them. Because when I went to the October meeting, it really felt like I was at a dog and pony show of, you know, nothing to see here, you know, no reason to be concerned, you can opt out if you want, but everything was kept at a very high level. And, you know, the study showed the statistics of those who were in favor, yada, yada, yada. But I've got to tell you, when I get those phone calls of the surveys, I don't answer them. I mean, I don't know who's picking up and answering these, but I don't know that those are necessarily really representative. Yeah, I'm just saying, that's my own personal experience, and I'm sure there's many people like me. But there's a saying, you know, that God always forgives, people sometimes forgive, and nature never forgives. And with the STD rates that we see in Omaha, I think we're experiencing that nature never forgives. And I got to ask you, given the fact that we have had comprehensive sex education for many years in OPS, the fact that we have epidemic STD rates, to me says, is this really working? I mean, is this effective? I mean, to me, the definition, I've heard the definition of insanity is doing the same thing and expecting a different result. And I think we've got that right in front of us right now. And, you know, we say that we're really interested in doing things that are up-to-date and scientific. Well, you know, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to see that we have been doing this for some time now, and we are not making improvement. My last point just has to do with the changes. I was happy to see, and the one thing that I thought was positive was talking about sex trafficking and the new changes, but I thought it was a glaring omission that there was no attempt to address pornography and the social ... But, and then with the whole, the gender, the transgender issue, and I just got to say, you know, I thought that we lived in a country where there was no establishment of religion. And when you start teaching gender theory, you are establishing a religion, because those who are raised in Judeo-Christian beliefs believe that God created us male and female. When you start saying that you can choose to be whatever you want to be, that goes contrary to the traditions and beliefs of many, many people in this country, and you are establishing an entirely different belief that is contrary. That's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mary Jane Trumper. Thank you.
Mary Jane Trumper, T-R-U-E-M-P-E-R. My address is 5306 Isard Street. Thank you for allowing me to switch up with my husband. I just wanted to start out, I know that Dr. Kurburg is later on going to be talking about the survey results that came about after the October forum, and subsequently from the online answering. And I just wanted to point out ... is going on here, and what is going on in our schools and in our society, is because people are not being taught how to think critically. Survey is multi-page, and I'm not going to go into that, somebody else had already talked about that, was very daunting for most people to take. When you have an online survey, then, that you do as the alternative, I ... and I could go 100 times to Ms. Vay's district and say I'm from there, I could go 100 times to Mr. Vargas's district, and answer that survey myself, 100 times for every district. I don't know if y'all are aware of that. It's easy to do. When you go on and do a survey, it drops a cookie from that page into your web browser. You can go clear that cache and go back in, so it doesn't matter. You might as well, that's the same as doing a post-election survey after a debate on Drudge. I mean, it's as valid as that. So you might as well take that survey and rip it up. I did not do that. I could have. There might be some people here saying, wish you had. But I did not do that because I did not feel that was right. But, you know, it's possible. So that survey is not worth the time it's going to take to deliver the information on it today. I just wanted to make you aware of that. I also want to say that those kinds of surveys are biased against poor people, and against people that are not computer literate, or don't have access to computers. And so, again, here we're talking, you know, the poorest of the poor that don't get represented in an even way. Going back to my education, and the fact that my parents taught me how to think critically, and they were very important in my education, it was not the teachers, but my father, who had a sixth-grade education, and my mother that graduated high school, they knew how to think, and they knew how to teach the nine of us that were raised how to think. When the first speaker got up here, Mrs. Durie, I think is her name, from the Women's Fund, she said that there was a disparity, a racial disparity in adolescent, about adolescent health. There was a racial disparity, she said, on sexual literacy. Racial disparity on literacy. And we have 14%, as I believe I read, the NAEP results said 14% of eighth grade ... Fifty-state report, and that shot is S-C-H-O-T-T, Fifty-state Report on Public Education and Black Males. It backs that up, that there's a huge disparity. And my question to OPS, we're spending all this time talking about sexual literacy. Let's talk about literacy. And why do we have the disparity with our black community with this kind of literacy rate? I have a problem with that. Black people just cannot learn, and I hope that that's not what you think, but there has to be an explanation.
One minute.
I would love to see more people on this Board and more discussion about why we have that disparity, and then correct that disparity. And it concerns me that we had the woman that came up here about the social promotion and freezing grades, we've had that in the paper here recently. My husband actually mentored, is mentoring, a recent graduate of OPS, graduated with a B-plus average, is taking a whole year of remedial courses before he can even start taking college-level courses.
Thirty seconds.
So it doesn't matter what our graduation rate is, if our literacy rate is not, is high. So if you're graduating people that don't read, I'm sorry, you know, that doesn't count in my book. You might as well just save them the time that they're in school, go ahead and let them out, and do what they're going to do. But I just think that there's a lot of issues we need to be talking about, and I wish there was a little bit more honesty and openness, and we followed the strategic plan that we spent so much money on, that we followed that a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Maris Bentley, M-A-R-I-S-B-E-N-T-L-E-Y. I'm going to cut into a little bit of my planned testimony just to say thank you to those of you who are here listening to us and who voted to allow us to speak. And I want you to know that we, the people, are actually paying attention to those elected officials who are not here, who apparently don't care enough to sit here and listen to the testimony of those of us who came to make our voices heard. I reside at 2515 South 148th Street in Omaha. In addition to being a wife, mother, and grandmother, I'm also a retired teacher and school counselor, with an endorsement in seven through 12 social sciences, and a master's degree in K through 12 counseling. Twice now, I have testified against what is commonly called comprehensive sex education at the Unicameral in Lincoln, and I come before you today to make that same plea. OPS Board members and administrators, I am horrified by the content of comprehensive sex education. And frankly, I am shocked that any professional educator or elected school board member would think that such information ... On a page-by-page basis of the FLASH curriculum. I focused on this particular curriculum because it was the one initially indicated by OPS as the likely choice. ... equally problematic. Comprehensive sex education claims to be unbiased, age-appropriate, and medically accurate. It is ...... children to the idea of gender fluidity, that they just might not be the biological, DNA-unchangeable gender that they actually are. You call that unbiased? This type of information, these types of questions and activities for students are ideologically driven. They are not unbiased. Age-appropriate? By whose standards? Who are the professionals and where is the ... Age-appropriate to teach middle school students about oral and anal sex acts? It is imperative that you study the history of this movement, and the role of Dr. Alfred Kinsey, whose research back in the 40s and 50s, research that has been discredited, and for which he should have been arrested, paved the way for this comprehensive sex education which sexualizes children. Kinsey was a sexual deviant who experimented on infants and children. The Kinsey philosophy is the comprehensive sex education philosophy. Make no mistake about that. And that philosophy is that children are sexual and have a right to sexual relations at any age, without any regulation or restriction from the state or from their parents, and of course, devoid of any ideas of traditional morality. Medically accurate? Again, no. When examined in detail, there is much information missing, and again, one can only surmise it is due to the ideological agenda that is behind comprehensive sex education. Let me give you one example, and there are plenty of them, and I wish I had more time. We have known for several decades now, from research in the area of neuroscience, that the human brain, specifically the prefrontal cortex, which is the center for critical thinking and decision-making, isn't fully developed until people are in their mid-20s. Dr. Lawrence Steinberg, a nationally-recognized expert in adolescent psychology at Temple University, writes this: "We can no longer assume that teens make poor choices, drug use, high-speed driving, unprotected sex, because they are uninformed or unclear about the risks." Notice that. He's saying, it's not because they lack information here. There is substantial evidence that adolescents engage in dangerous activities despite knowing and understanding the risks involved. I learned about these developments in neuroscience years ago, and frankly, most parents of teenagers know this truth from experience. Yet despite this information from science, the basic premise of comprehensive sex education is that children just haven't been informed about all the facts, and if we just teach them the names of their genitalia and have them practice putting a condom on a plastic model, that will take care of it. Wrong. Children and teenagers are not mature adults.
Thank you so much. The next speaker is Kathy McDermott.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Hi, my name is Kathy McDermott. That's C-A-T-H-Y-M-C-D-E-R-M-O-T-T, 1307 North, 95th Ave. On August 28th and September 4th, I, along with two other concerned citizens, met with Human Growth and Development. the Human Growth and Development Supervisor to discuss comprehensive- ...information and Education Council of the United States, and the FLASH curriculum was purchased for OPS by the Omaha Women's Fund. One of the first questions we asked was, "Why is OPS pushing comprehensive sex education in the schools?" The answer given by the OPS official was that the old curriculum did not handle these topics: masturbation, contraception, abortion. OPS held a forum on October 20th where 1,700 parents opposing CSE attended. At the meeting, OPS officials stated that no Human Growth and Development curriculum had been selected. What is the truth? We met with the supervisor who said the FLASH curriculum was going to be used. How can we trust OPS officials if they are telling us conflicting statements? Comprehensive sex education is pornography under the guise of education and is being promoted as biased and value-free. How can one teach biased and value-free sex ed? The values that CSE promote are those that most parents would never agree with: promiscuity, human sexuality divorced from procreation, and sexual behavior in which the emphasis is on self-serving pleasure and mutual consent. FLASH curriculum is a comprehensive sex education curriculum. Do you want to know what OPS wants to teach your child? Let me give you some examples. I have the FLASH curriculum. It is not any different than the other comprehensive sex education curriculums. Here's a K through 4th example. If you could be born again and pick your gender, what would you be? Would you stay the same? Change to another gender? Vulva, vagina, clitoris, penis, scrotum, and testicles. For- I'm pretty sure the TV stations are not going to want to show this on their station. 7th and 8th grade students, anal intercourse. They start with that. Is this the kind of, anal intercourse, this is the definition they give the kids, is the kind of sexual touch where one person's penis is in another person's anus? Introduction to definitions of oral, anal, and vaginal sex with the definition of anal sex, the instructions to the teachers. The teachers probably, the teachers say to the kids, probably some students in your class will make inappropriate noises and comments at the idea of anal intercourse, and this is what the teachers are to say. It is not, it is important to not allow disrespectful remarks because people have diverse beliefs about intercourse. And this would be the appropriate time to use value-question protocol. And I will show you what they use for the 7th graders. They have, this is what is in the FLASH curriculum. They have flashcards showing how to put a condom on. This is comprehensive sex education. Parents, administrators, teachers have high expectations of our children to perform well in the academic realm. Drugs and alcohol are taught with a definite no. Sex in grade school, high school is a definite no. It is saved for marriage. What message is OPS giving to our children, students, by giving them condoms? "I don't trust you, so take this." Truth and trust are invaluable. Please do your research on this.
Thank you so much. The next speaker is Georgia, L-O-L-O-E, oh, Abel. Georgia Abel.
My name is Georgia Abel, E-B-E-L. I live at 218 North 100th Street, 68134. I've lived in Omaha, Nebraska, all my life. I love it here, and I appreciate your patient kindness for this extended meeting. ...in OPS because I have a beloved, you know, grandson, great-grandson that is in OPS middle school. George Washington reminded us that without the God of the Bible, this country could not succeed. We are creatures of intellect, rational intellect, and free will, and what anti-values corrupts that great gift of being a human being. What we need are values. I'll tell you a story. I don't understand, so grandmother sat in her old rocking chair and drew him close to make- Sometimes the roads bend weary, sometimes cross strife, but true joy often comes in our darkest hours, as our beloved God, His graces faithfully showers. From the tiniest flower, weeping on roadside display, to the magnificent stars sprinkle across the milky way. Our Creator has shone with each bird's song, the order in the universe. Only man can choose wrong. He's given us a pattern of right choices to follow. Ten commandments last in art; sins we would wallow. These laws are good for every person, family, nation on earth. They help to promote a soul's great worth. Furthermore, there is love so sublime, as taught by Christ Jesus in ancient times. With free slaughter and violence in our nuclear age, only Christ's love living within us can transcend hatred and rage. The great energy this Christian love promotes helps to separate the sheep from the wayward goats. Then someday, will the voice of the Lord step into my kingdom for your just reward? You disdain- ...pornography taught in our schools.
Good evening. My name is-